Good evening. I call this meeting to order, and you probably are noticing that I am not Mayor Harold Weinberg. Harold is not here. He is on vaca—
Shock.
He is on vacation with his family. And for those of you wondering, he's only—this is only the second meeting that he's missed in 12 years. So, a lot of people don't have a lot of experience in this, so have patience with me. I believe Councilmember Smith, that you are leading our ceremony opening.
Thank you. Let me open with happy birthday. April is kind of a neat month. We have two significant birthdays. First of all, we have Kerry's birthday, 148 years old. It's always nice to recognize a younger group, you know. And I think, just so you know, we're already planning for our sesquicentennial in two years, and our staff—our council liaison on that is Mr. Yurha. So, stay tuned for some exciting programs and activities in the next two years. It's also the birthday of Earth Day, and we'll talk more about that in one of the proclamations. So for now, would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands—
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we start really well today, don't we?
Harold must have taken the flag with him.
For those of you wondering, the flag's normally over there. I can't wait till Mayor Weinberg watches this on TV later. All right, there have been three requests to amend the agenda this evening. The applicant of item 4.1018REZ27, the Weston PDD amendment has been asked—they've asked for the item to be removed from the agenda and returned to council for a decision on May 23rd. We also have a request to add a recognition for the culinary students who are here from our sister city, Létoque, France. And following that, we'll have the Earth Day proclamation, as mentioned before, and then to remove item 4.7, the condemnation resolution to secure additional easements for the Reedie Creek Road widening project from the agenda, as staff has resolved this item prior to tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda? Yes? Yes? Second? Got it? Any discussion? No? All in favor? Opposed? All right, that motion passes. So, I'd like to take this time to recognize also, in our audience, the Boy Scouts of Troop 200 who meet at the First Methodist Church on Academy Street. I believe these scouts are working towards their citizenship and the community badge. Could you gentlemen stand and be recognized? There they are. Thank you all for attending. I hope it's interesting for you. Our next recognition item is for the presentation of the Bike Month proclamation. I'll invite Dennis Marcata Soriano of the East Coast Greenway Alliance to meet me at the podium for the presentation. I'll start, and then how about you, all right? For those of you who are interested, May is—2018 is Bike Month, and so hopefully I'm going to see all of you on the greenways on your bikes. I expect to see definitely Councilmember France, who I know has one now, and I'll be looking for Jack as well.
Keep looking.
We'll do a quick read of the proclamation. So, whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling for fun, fitness, sports, recreation, and transportation, and the town of Kerry has been a nationally recognized bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists since 2003; and whereas the town of Kerry Greenway system has over 80 miles of trail connecting to schools, neighborhoods, and an expansive network of over 2,600 acres of parks and open space; and whereas the East Coast Greenway is a walking and biking route stretching 3,000 miles from Maine to Florida connecting our nation's most populated corridor; whereas the Triangle Region is the most connected urban area along the East Coast Greenway with over 19 miles passing through the town of Kerry along the American Tobacco Trail, the White Oak Creek Greenway, and the Black Creek Greenway; and whereas the bike network and Greenway system promote a healthy lifestyle, support economic development, provide sustainable transportation, enhance community engagement, and foster climate resilience, all of which in turn enhances neighborhood vitality and livability. And now therefore, I, Lori Bush, Mayor Pro Tem of the Town of Kerry, and on behalf of the Kerry Town Council, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Bike Month in the Town of Kerry, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
We would like you to.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Lori. We're really lucky to have Lori's leadership here in this community and also within the East Coast Greenway community. And I'm honored to receive this proclamation on behalf of the East Coast Greenway Alliance. It's a great time to celebrate. The weather is perfect now, right? So, we can all get out on our bikes, we can enjoy ourselves, we can get healthy and happy on those miles of smiles riding the greenways. As I shared with many of you at the ribbon-cutting of the lovely new White Oak Creek Greenway segment, congratulations on that. I really want to emphasize how historic this year is, 2019. As you know, it's the 40th year of Kerry Greenways, and y'all are leaders. You're making it happen. And it's also a historic time for the East Coast Greenway. Back in 1991, there were visionary local leaders who were putting together these budding little Greenway segments, and today, it's more popular than all—than any other national park in the U.S. system. We received 15 million bike rides and runs and walks on the East Coast Greenway, thanks to partners like you. It's really happening. I grew up in neighboring Chatham County, and I was a Boy Scout, and I was getting out and I was on the creek all the time out in the woods. And that kind of experience is not going to exist unless we work hard to set the right policies and to make biking and walking safe and accessible for everyone. So, I just want to applaud all the work that you're doing. I want to help all—the young people and all the old people like me to just enjoy their time getting outdoors, and they need that safe space. They really do. Otherwise, they can't get to see the cardinals and the possums and the dogwoods and the oaks. They can't really get that deep connection that makes them good stewards of the land. And they're also on the East Coast Greenway, again, 3,000 miles. They can connect the moose to the manatee, the best key lime pie to the best blueberry pie, the best Philly cheese steak to North Carolina barbecue. So, that's what we try to do with the East Coast Greenway. That's what we're doing with you. We want to bring people together, connecting cultures and connecting people to nature. And we want to build this sustainable, healthy path. It's already bringing over $90 million in benefit to the Triangle Region, thanks to your leadership. And I really want to thank you for that leadership. Want to keep working together. We want to get 100 million visits on the East Coast Greenway per year. So, we've got a long way to go. We've got a long way to go. We've got climate change. We've got other issues coming at us, obesity epidemic. So, we've got a lot of work to do. But I appreciate everything that you've done and want to work together on Davis Drive and West Dynasty Drive. Those are the only two little gaps in connecting the East Coast Greenway system through the Town of Kerry. So, congratulations on your historic moment. I look forward to working with you as we, you know, build the United States of America, really people working together, not separated, but together, and enjoying each other's company and enjoying each other's leadership. So, thank you so much for this proclamation. I really appreciate it. And East Coast Greenway Alliance is always ready for your call, your email, anything. We want to work together. We want to get this great project done, and we can celebrate on June 8th, on Saturday. There's a 40-mile or a 25-mile cross-trial bike ride. All of you are welcome to join us on. So, thank you very much on behalf of the East Coast Greenway.
For some reason, I want some key lime pie and some barbecue.
All right. Our next recognition item is the presentation of Earth Day proclamation, and I'll invite Councilmember Jack Smith and Rick Savage, the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Board, to go to the podium for the presentation.
Your words were wonderful, and want you to know that Rick and I are leading the youth movement, so we'll be— What an exciting time, and it was very—it's so inspiring to follow the words of our previous speaker, because what we're doing now is we're designating April 27th as Kerry Earth Day, a special day. And I would like, Rick, to read you this proclamation, if you'll bear with me. Whereas the Town of Kerry is a leader in building community awareness and action around environmental conservation and resiliency, it is my pleasure to commemorate Earth Day as an opportunity to build awareness about the many programs and efforts our community enthusiastically supports throughout the year. We mark April 27th, 2019, as Kerry Earth Day and commemorate this celebration with green initiatives incorporation—incorporating them at our Spring Days Festival. The Spring Days Arts and Crafts Festival has been the home of local art for 26 years and added the town's Earth Day celebration to its offerings in 2004. And we are proud to offer additional green features at the festival this year, like the water bottle refill station, composting, and sustainable public art. And whereas this day allows us to celebrate our many commitments and efforts to reduce our town's operational, environmental impacts and our communities' impact, including the recognition of number 30 Greatest Fleet in the Nation Long-Serving Recycling Services and Waste Reduction Programs, the 10-year anniversary of our environmental volunteer programs such as Spruce and Block Leader Program, and our Citizen Volunteer Environmental Advisory Board. And whereas we approach our service with an overarching ethic of sustainability paired with innovation, collaboration, and data-driven decision-making, I am delighted to mark this date as an opportunity to look forward and affirm our commitment to the future generations. And now therefore, I, Jack Smith, Councilmember of the Town of Kerry, with the entire council and on behalf of Mayor Weinberg and the Kerry—again, the Kerry Town Council, do I proclaim April 27th, 2019, as Kerry Earth Day, and I encourage everyone to join us at Earth Day Lane at the Spring Days Arts and Crafts Festival at Bond Park. And I'd like to present this to you on behalf of our council and to one of—the—I believe one of the most exciting boards and involved boards. And I want to thank you so much for yours and all of the board's services.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much. This is fantastic, and I—yeah, and I really admire you guys. I think that Jack said something very important that—I think it's very important. The Board—the Environmental Advisory Board has some of the best people I've ever worked with in my life on that board. They're very hardworking and they're very committed, and I think it's a pleasure to be working with them, and I'm very excited for that. So, many of us will be there Saturday, working our stations. We hope to see a lot of people there. It's very—we're very proud to serve on the board and know that the town is very committed to its environmental goals and initiatives, and so we want to continue that work and so forth. And I have to give just one quick plug. May is also American Wetlands Month, so let's not forget that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember Smith, I believe you're going to stay right there and introduce some special guests that we have.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would like Veronique and Julien, the two chaperones with our French—and all of our 10 French students, please join us up here at the podium. Got a crowd today, don't we? This is kind of neat. This is kind of neat. You know, there's a real theme tonight. We heard it in our first speaker. We heard a little bit from Rick. Kerry is such a special place. I found it very interesting when we were talking about Bike Month, how we were sharing about bringing cultures together, bringing people together, you know, be it on our bike paths, on our trailways, or with our Sister Cities programs. We are so proud to be in one of the most inclusive and welcoming cities in this country, and I think our Sister Cities program helps to bring out those values that are so near and dear. And what's important is the people understand this program of exchange has been going on in Kerry since 1992. So, think about it. Since 1992 to the present, we've had, on average—I won't say always 10, but we've had five to 10—coming over here, and then we reciprocate and go over there. And what better way to learn about each other? Not in the tabloids, not in the papers, but we get to learn about each other. We get to learn about our friendships, what's so similar and what we can learn from each other. It is a very exciting time. Now, while they were here this time, they're—they're working as culinary exchange students, and they're working at some of our local restaurants and hotels. But they did have some spare time, and I was talking to some of them about that, and they have been—let's see, you've been to the beach, right? You've been to the ocean? Yeah, there you go. And they've—they've actually attended some classes at Wake Tech, and they've attended—excuse me—various cultural events in the area. So, want to do a shout-out and a special thank you. I can't give you all the names right now, but most of them are staying with host families. And it is really important, as we move this program forward, that we continue to find families in our community that would like to share in that experience. I can tell you, I know the mayor's done it before, and it is an experience that will live for you for a long time. And so, we trust that you've had a wonderful experience here, and now I'd like to turn it over to you to introduce the folks and to say a few words, okay? Veronique, there you go.
Hi, everybody. My name is Veronique. I am one of the chaperones here, and my job at school is—I am in charge of the boarding school, and I am sort of counselor in education, including discipline at school, you see? So, the second, my colleague here, Julien Bourgois, is a teacher, a culinary teacher. I'm not his.
And a former intern, right?
Yes, yes. And we are here with 10 students. So, I begin to meet the girls. Beranger. Avant de toi. Hi, you say hi?
This way.
Noémie. Eva. Claire. Manon, the girls. Five girls, five boys. You see, five guys. Alexandre. Léo. Lucas. Corantin. And Maxime. So, I'm very glad to be here, because it is my second time, you see? And I have two caps. I have the caps of the school and the caps of Sister City, because in France, in Létoque, I belong to the Sister City community. You see, so I know Ken. And I'm very, very glad to be here. It's my pleasure, and I would like to give a little gift, because it is an apron, you see, to cook. And there is the name of our school, you see? It's called—yeah, you see?
All right. I think I know what to do with myself. This is wonderful. I will share this with the mayor on his behalf. Did you want to say something, Julien? I don't want to get this.
You say it's funny, because he was here 10 years ago as a student. You see, the same place, you see? So, now he's come back, and he's very glad to.
That's great. That's okay?
That's okay.
All right. Let's give them all one more round of applause.
I really believe that the Sister City program enhances our—the cultural fabric of our community, so we really appreciate you coming to council and introducing yourselves. So, thank you so much.
They're going for some cultural enjoyment now.
I think it's great.
I think to a local restaurant.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I think it's time to turn it over to Town Manager Stiegel for any comments you might have.
Thank you very much. The National Pill Takeback Initiative will take place Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There are five collection locations around the community to make it convenient for citizens to participate. Please visit our website for your nearest drop-off location. Thank you.
All right. That was short and sweet. Thank you. Mr. Stiegel, our next agenda item is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speak Out speakers have up to three minutes each for comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it is not a public hearing. The three-minute time will be enforced not to be rude, but to be fair to all speakers, and there is a timer at the podium to help you adhere to the three-minute limit. When you have 30 seconds left, the green light will turn to yellow, and when your time is up, a flashing red light will appear. To help have an efficient Public Speaks Out item, we ask that groups have a spokesperson to speak on their behalf to reduce repetitive comments. Also, if you would like to speak next, after the person that is at the podium, please stand behind the clerk towards the stairs and wait for your turn. It also signals to us here that there are additional speakers. I thank everyone in the audience for respecting that this is a business meeting, and because of that, please do not applaud, make remarks from your seat, or anything else that distracts from this meeting. So, we'll now open the Public Speaks Out for anyone who wants to speak. At this time, the first speaker may approach the podium via the aisle to my right and give the clerk your completed contact information and any handouts or items that you want the rest of the council to see.
Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ron Harrod. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you in opposition to the rezoning application 18REZ-22, Branton Drive and Green Level West Road. You may recall, I'm a longtime resident of White Oak Estates and owner of the residential lot that adjoins the 300-foot northern border of the subject property. My residential lot has more acreage than these two parcels combined. It houses two people and a dog and has two garaged cars. Now, we all know that Google knows everything, or just about everything. If I ask Google Maps to pull up White Oak Estates, it shows the outline of a 100-acre subdivision built out to an effective density of R100. As we look at adjacent subdivisions, we find the Overlook to the north, and then circling around next, we see the Reserve, Lansdowne, Ashley Woods, and finally, Fieldstone subdivision directly to my south. Now, if we check the subject 1.71-acre property to my south in Wake County real estate records, we find it is owned by Talax and Trefalgar Companies out of Canada and New York, and is described as Fieldstone subdivision. The associated map dated September 1993. This was sent to you, council, along with our letter of opposition and other supporting attachments. It shows the subject parcel as part of the subdivision that developed out as Lansdowne. So, the connection between Lansdowne and this parcel is that they are part of the same subdivision. But we can even go back a little further. On Valentine's Day of all days, 1991—that's the day, uh, year before we were talking about earlier—the Town of Kerry public record first defined the zoning of this parcel and of what would become Lansdowne as R12. From Valentine's Day 1991 to today, over 28 years, the subject property has maintained its current residential zoning characterization, Lansdowne, Ashley Woods, the Reserve, the Overlook, and my current house were developed with the understanding that the subject parcel was Fieldstone subdivision and zoned R12. Zoning should protect the character of neighborhoods and foster orderly development. I trust you agree, and when the time comes, vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, my name's Jamie Loyack. I'm here on behalf of Red Storm Entertainment, and I just want to take this time to thank you for pushing our case to May 23rd meeting. This is going to give us the time to meet with the neighbors and hear their continued concerns, and I just wanted to also say that Red Storm is committed to making this a great project and a win-win for everybody, and we're excited. We're in the process right now of meeting—or set a meeting up to meet on-site with the neighbors. So, again, I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Anyone? All right, well, we'll close Public Speaks Out. We're now at the—do we have one?
We were deciding to go next.
Okay.
I'm Michelle Conlin. I live at Wood Forest Drive in Kerry, and I'm here today to follow up with an issue we've been talking about for a while. The item number is 18REZ11, and it's called Roberts Road Rezoning. It's essentially a Toll Brothers project that would wedge 127 townhomes onto 22 acres within our neighborhood of 77 homes that are 1, 2, 3 acres each. And I don't have a big version of this graphic, but essentially, I've shared this with all of you, that this is how it would look to put that many townhomes in a neighborhood where all of these are green dots or homes. And you can see that it's clearly within our neighborhood. It's not adjacent. There's no transition. It's— It's inside of our neighborhood. This is the only exterior road. And I've provided this in the past to the council's handouts. We neighbors who are affected by this have consistently and tirelessly spoken out at every opportunity, and we've objected to this. We've objected to the density of the project, specifically, the density. And at the June 11th neighborhood meeting, 55 neighbors attended, which was a lot, believe me. We filled the room, we ran out of time, we didn't have things to talk about. But every one of those neighbors was opposed to the density of this project. Over the following, what's it been, 10, 9 months, through all of the opportunities we've had to provide input and comment and work with the developer through this public participation process, the proposal remains utterly unchanged, aside from some shrubbery placement and the nature of the roads that they would plan to put within their development. Now, we neighbors in Western Cary, we're kind of homesteaders. We moved out here 20, 30 years ago. We bought property. We took a risk. There wasn't a gas station nearby. There were one or two restaurants, not much was going on. But, we came out here, we settled our families, we supported local businesses, we encouraged other businesses to come out here and locate and develop. We were doing that on the predication that the zoning that we bought our properties into, the zoning, would protect the nature of our neighborhood. And back then, it was called VLDR, Very Low Density Residential. What we've seen in the public participation process over the last nine, 10 months has been frustrating and discouraging. We haven't been given much voice from our perspective. The very fact that with so many months and participating literally at every opportunity we could, the nature of this proposal by Toll Brothers remains unchanged for its density. It's incomprehensible to me that a group of neighbors who have submitted a petition against this, signed by 53 neighbors, who have shown up and spoken at all of the public hearings against this proposal, and we only get three minutes, sometimes five if it's the right day. We can't use overheads, we can't make projections, we can't speak as a group, we can't speak comprehensively about it. There were two separate hearings, one for the rezoning and one for the annexation. And at each, we could not talk about the other. To us, this is a proposal for a town and community. The developer could talk at each of those hearings about the total project. We were not given that opportunity. The developer could talk at 20, 30 minutes. Now, we can talk about, and I welcome the opportunity to follow up and talk more about the process for public participation. I think it could use some close scrutiny, especially as Cary grows. I would hate to see our nationally acclaimed community become embarrassed by a public participation process that doesn't fully include the residents and reflect the tireless input and opinions and expert information that we've provided you. But we are encouraged that the Planning and Zoning Board found 4 to 3 against the proposal this Monday. I have a red light.
You do? And we don't normally do this, but can someone from staff please meet with Ms. Conlin and explain how our process has changed and the opportunity for them to speak when it comes before us at council, because the process has changed.
Oh, since June or November?
Yes, right. So, we used to allow and provide an opportunity for you to speak at Planning and Zoning, but now we do that at council. So, you'll well have an opportunity to come and speak at council. So, Mr. Stiegel, can you?
Oh, okay. You mean at council, when you hear from the Planning and Zoning Board?
Yes, yes.
I see, okay.
Somebody from staff will contact you after you fill out that card.
That's really encouraging. Thank you so much.
Sure.
That's very encouraging.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
Hey, guys. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Protem, Town Council. I recognize a lot of faces in here. You might not recognize me, but I recognize a lot of these kids back here as well in the Scouts, which are the future leaders of this community and this country. And they'll be sitting where you guys are one day. 23 years ago, actually 25 years ago, we came before you guys.
Excuse me, could you give us your name, please?
Oh, we need a name. Bill Farley. Sorry about that. 25 years ago, we came before you guys as we were proposing to start a business here in town on Buck Jones Road. It is now a hugely successful roller skating rink that we have had for 23 years. I am very fortunate to have a good friend and a business partner, many of you guys know Robin Rose, as my partner. We have been through the best of the best, the worst of the worst. We are in the top 10% of revenue-producing skating rinks in the country, out of 1,200 skating rinks. But all that was Plan B. That was not our Plan A for that 20-acre project. Our Plan A was a lot different. It was bigger, it was bolder, it impacted the community more, it impacted the environment more. It was a large-scale putt-putt, golfing games, and go-kart track. Well, we came to you guys 25 years ago, and there was a lot of negative publicity, there was TV cameras, there was a lot of news reports on it. And we backed off. We collected some green stamps on it. We backed off and we said, we're going to go with Plan B. What I'm here to talk about is just a brief follow-up from Michelle. Toll Brothers is coming into our community, our area, on Roberts Road with their Plan A. And it's a big plan, it's a big project, it's a big change for our area. It is going to have a huge impact on our street, which is Wood Forest Drive, and potentially on Wade Drive as well. The potential tie-in to our road, which is Wood Forest, could very well be devastating to the traffic coming through there and to the homeowners. As I was leaving with my wife earlier, we stopped at the stop sign to get onto Highway 55, which is an uncontrolled intersection. And if it wasn't for me having to go down there with my mower and cut the site triangle so our neighbors could see, we can't safely get out. And adding more traffic to that is going to be detrimental to that community. And a disservice to the motoring public coming through there and adding more traffic to that as well. So, Plan B is okay, and even if there's a Plan C, but please, don't go with Plan A with these guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Smith, 105 Trelawney Lane. My 3 acres are adjacent to the Roberts Road proposal. The traffic plan, the traffic plan for the proposal will take all of the traffic right by my property. You've heard our concerns, they're primarily about density. We know development is going to happen. You've got a very difficult job to balance people, quiet enjoyment of our property, and profits, and development. We're very encouraged by the planning department's work in this area. We're encouraged by the zoning board's consideration and decision earlier this week. And we encourage you all to pay as close attention as you can, and good luck in making a balanced decision. I'm going to close and speak code to one of your members.
Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we're now at the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, take a moment to review our consent agenda items. One vote approves all of these items. The minutes, a bid award for FY18 Sewer Interceptor Rehabilitation Project, 19 AO2 John Stevens Swigger, or Swigger, annexation, 18 REZ-18 Veterinary Specialty Hospital Expansion, and the recommendation of an important preservation commission vacancy. Would any council member like to pull an item from consent? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? The motion carries. All right, so we are now at the, I think, public hearing. The same rules apply for Public Speaks Out, except speakers now have five minutes. Our first public hearing is item 18 REZ-26 Walnut Street rezoning. Director of Economic Development Ted Boyd will introduce the item, and council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but it'll be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board, and item will return to council at a future meeting. Welcome, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Before Meredith comes up to lead us through the technical components of this rezoning, just a couple of contextual pieces to hear. This is consistent with the plans that we've had since going all the way back to 2012. And you have the, that downtown park master plan, which really sort of established the parameters of sort of the park and where there could be private development around that. And then, fast forward, in 2014, we really established the seven-acre size, and then in 2019, just recently, we, you all approved the new downtown park master plan. And you can see where we're continuing to have the development on the Walnut Street edge that's there. And then, through that process, realized that the shape of the park itself made the most sense to be able to concentrate that development, not on any of the other corners or edges, but to keep it really along that one section, and to keep the consistency of the size of the park within that. And then, also, as a part of that process, many citizens throughout all of the engagement were able to see some of the renderings, and this was just an opportunity to be able to see conceptually what that development might look like on that edge. And so, again, keeping the consistency with the plans all along. And then, what we're talking about is outside of the realm of the seven acres, so it's not encroaching within that. And with that, I'd love for Meredith to come up and lead us through this rezoning.
Thanks, Ted. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. This is a town-initiated rezoning for 0.41 acres in downtown Cary. The subject site includes portions of property along South Academy Street and Walnut Street. The existing zoning is a small piece of Town Center Office Institutional Conditional Use, or TCOICU, and the remainder is Town Center Medium Density Residential, or TCMDR. Permitted uses in MDR include a variety of residential types at a density up to eight units per acre. The park takes up the predominant part of this block, and a park is a permitted use in virtually any zoning district. The zoning is proposed to be changed to Town Center High Intensity Mixed Use, or TCHMXD. Some allowed uses in HMXD include commercial uses like retail sales and service, or food and beverage service, office uses in a variety of housing types up to 50 units per acre. So, why are we just rezoning this small piece of property in this block? The subject property is outside of the park's master plan area, and this rezoning request will facilitate future development opportunities adjacent to the park. The Imagine Cary Community Plan sets the desired course for our future. The downtown special planning area, or SPA, is a focus area in our community, and includes two key policies that need to be considered for this case. First, encouraging downtown reinvestment and redevelopment, and second, supporting a range of uses in downtown. Downtown is a walkable area, including an existing and growing network of greenways and sidewalk connectors, and of course, the downtown park. The streets surrounding the downtown park block are two- or three-lane thoroughfares, except for Park Street, which is a collector's street. Both Go Cary and Go Triangle have transit routes conveniently located to the property. Our practice of notifying property owners within 800 feet of a rezoning parcel exceeds both Cary's land development ordinance requirement of 100 feet, and also the state's requirement of notifying adjacent parcels. Also, the site was posted on April 5. Three citizens joined us at the neighborhood meeting on March 27, and they had questions about building height, future residential development, if there was some sort of partnership with a developer. Staff has received no calls or emails about this case. So, that concludes their presentation, and staff is available for questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Gruber. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for 18 REZ-26 Walnut Street rezoning and call the first speaker forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. That was a quick public hearing. The next step in the process is for the Advisory Planning and Zoning Board to review and give us their comments and recommendations, and it'll return to council for consideration of final action.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is on the FY2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, and I believe Director of Special Projects Dana Widmar will introduce our speaker, Morgan Mansa, the town's Housing and CDBG manager, who will present this item. Just a reminder, no action will be taken tonight by council.
Thank you. Good evening, and I'm very pleased to introduce a new staff member to you tonight. Morgan Mansa is here, and our new Housing and CDBG manager. She joins us most recently from Nashville, Tennessee, and she originates from Chicago,
Thank you, Dana, and good evening, council. So, tonight's public hearing is the final step in Cary's Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Process. This is a really important opportunity for our residents to offer feedback on Cary's housing and community needs as it relates to our annual action plan related to CDBG funding. So, over the last several months, our staff have met with residents and other stakeholders to solicit citizen input. That information, along with what we hear tonight, will help to shape the strategy and funding recommendations that are detailed within this annual action plan. So, funds may be used for a variety of purposes, social services, public facilities, for housing, as well as economic development. A key component to this program is to improve the character, the value, and the cohesiveness of our neighborhoods, which nicely links it to Cary's 2040 Community Plan. The CDBG program has been in place in Cary for 16 years and has provided multiple benefits to our community. It's, we've received $9.1 million to date, and this has helped to fund 155 individual projects, and within that 155 projects, 278 units were also supported of housing. So, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to gain feedback on the housing and community needs of, as it relates to the 2019 action plan. HUD just made the announcement that our award for 1920 will be $650,061. And so, after tonight's hearing, Cary will prepare our annual action plan, publish that draft, we'll update it if that's necessary, and then, we will submit that final document to HUD on June 11. So, I encourage the public tonight to go beyond their organization and their specific funding requests, and share with all of us tonight the housing community development needs of all of our residents. Help the town, help council, and help all of our other stakeholders better understand our community, so that we can thoughtfully and strategically allocate dollars to best meet the needs of our residents. So, at this time, the public may comment on the housing and community needs as it relates to the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. Following the public hearing, staff will be available for questions.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing and invite the first speaker to approach the podium. the podium.
My name is Dan Daniel. I am the Director of Development and Public Relations for the Tammy Lynn Center. I am speaking tonight in regards to our application for a block grant. That application is in front of the council. TLC has a long history with the city of Cary. When we were incorporated in 1969, we were working out of the basement of Greenwood Forest Baptist Church. In 1996, we opened our first community-based group home, and that was opened here in Cary. Since then, we have opened two additional homes with the help of the city council and previous block grants. That most recent grant was in 2018, and that money was used to help purchase a home that we had been renting for more than 10 years. That was phase one of what we anticipated being a two-phase project. This request in front of you is to start phase two, which will be the temporary relocation of the residents of that home, so that we can begin a significant renovation of that property. In addition to the 12 individuals that live in the three homes operated by Tammy Lynn Center, we also serve more than 50 residents of Cary with services in their homes, including both early childhood intervention services and respite care services for folks who have a loved one with disabilities in their home. All of those residents are low and moderate income individuals. As I mentioned earlier, this money will be used to begin the renovation of this home. We have also received conditional approval from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for additional $360,000 that with your money will allow us to completely renovate this property and make it a forever home for four adults with a wide range of abilities. This will be our fourth or fifth project that we will have completed with the city, and we think we've demonstrated to be good stewards of the city's funds. I want to thank you for that past consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions or be available to staff as regards to this project.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Next speaker.
I'd like to start by just thanking all of you for being who you are individually, and most of all collectively. I continue to brag about being around the best form of government I think that exists in our nation. A lot of people could learn from you guys and ladies. So, Community Development Block Grants.
Can you provide your name, please?
My name is Howard Manning, and I work for Dorcas Ministries. Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Community Development Block Grants, I don't know if you guys realize it, but it's really important in making a lot of visions and dreams become reality. And I'd say that Dorcas is just one of those testimonies as to how your investments have helped perpetrate that. For example, Community Development Block Grants helped us purchase a dying shopping center in 2008 and turn it into a thriving business community. Now Dorcas Plaza not only houses Dorcas Ministries, but we are home for Habitat Humanity Restore, Read and Feed Youth Literacy, Triangle Phasia Project, the Triangle Larno Club, and most recently, Advanced Community Health, which is the only health clinic in Cary that you can go and get health care regardless of your financial needs, means, or lack of financial means. All that because of the partnership. When you talk about economic stability, when we moved and purchased Dorcas Plaza, Dorcas had five employees. Right now, we have 12 full-time employees and five part-time employees, and each of us spend money and buy goods and services, guess where? In the town of Cary. Talk about clients served. When we moved to Dorcas Plaza, we had about 700 clients that we served a year. This year, we will exceed 25,000 clients that we will serve to the tune of greater than $1.5 million. We've also been able to acquire a parcel of land for capacity building due to the help of CDBG funds that can be used for affordable housing, could be used to generate further services. Needs and means of use are just tremendous out there that we can use it for, but we couldn't have did it without CDBG funds. We are right now in the process of wrapping up a massive renovation project, but probably 50 to 60% of the funding came from CDBG funds to help us improve efficiency as well as safety. We've got over 600-plus volunteers now, and so sometimes, you know, it gets quite crowded. So we're trying to make sure we maintain a safe working environment. In 2019, we've requested funding from the town for CDB funds to help us expand our service capacity. We're in the process of doing some renovations by moving some tenants from one end of the shopping center to the other end of the shopping center. That will allow us to double the space that we have now available for client services, and also enlarge and improve our food distribution process. Along with that, we'd want to talk about housing just briefly, while right now, we do not supply affordable housing inventory. But we address it from the end of trying to make housing more affordable, which basically means increasing earning potential. So we have our career advancement program, and we have our Launch Cary program that we just initiated this year with the Cary Rotary Clubs, where we will be not only doing just academic and technical skills, but soft skills, so that people can improve and continue their lifelong learning, and increase their potential so they can afford to live in Cary and other places without having to depend on public assistance. Another part of emergency housing is in 2018, we started our emergency housing program at Cary, and since then, we've helped 78 families and spent over $200,000 in those efforts. And most of those efforts remain to help people stay housed where they are. We call it bloom where they're planted. Sometimes we have to get temporary housing, like hotels or different places, until we can stabilize them. But you provided us the capacity to generate those funds, so that we can allocate them, and allocate them wisely. So I want to thank you for what you've done for us in the past. We look forward to our continuing partnership and relationship, and therefore, if we can ever build further assistance, don't hesitate to let us know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do any council members? Oh, I see them now. So we didn't really close the public hearing.
Good evening, council. My name is Jessica Uller, and two years ago, I started researching how the Community Development Block Grant money is distributed. It was brought up and discussed at the 2017 council meeting, where funding distribution was decided, and it was very eye-opening. I have the same concerns now as I did then. I'm concerned that organizations that can do some real good won't get funded because of the way the applications are scored. Has anything been done to change the scoring? Was there a focus group to improve the scoring process as Ed Yarha asked for and Don Donaghy mentioned at the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Council Meeting? Some of my concerns more specifically, has the way new builds score higher than rehabs been fixed? Thus, new construction is more likely to be funded than fixing up what exists. With land prices getting higher and undeveloped land a scarcity in Cary, this factor is crucial and will only get worse. Fiscal stability scores higher, meaning the more money you have, the higher your score. Has that been adjusted in the scoring? Lots of good organizations do their best to not hold on to their funds, but instead use them to help individuals in need, and this should not be counted against them. Where the application asks cost per recipient, if you were only looking at the current request, then it is completely inaccurate. All past Community Development Block Grant funding for the current project, and not just the past year, should be listed. That is the only way to get a complete picture of actual funding total. The number-one goal is more affordable housing. Does that mean only new construction? And does the actual funds requested per unit play into that scoring? Not just the fact that it ends up being affordable to the person who ends up living in it. Evaluating past performance. Does the fact that one organization keeps dumping hundreds of thousands of Community Development Block Grant dollars into one project for five years, starting in 2015, and the fact that not one person has been helped by the project to date count against them? Will they continue to be funded with more and more Community Development Block Grant money until it comes to fruition? This is not the first or second time this has happened. It's becoming a pattern. Maybe it's time to see what other organizations can do. When a project comes upon unexpected costs, and the organization has over $35 million in total assets and $10 million in net assets, will you continue to deprive other organizations of desperately needed funds, and continue to fund an organization that doesn't really need it, and has admitted here in this room that they have numerous other sources of funding? And lastly, how much for Cary's owner-occupied housing rehab program? This is a very important program to keep existing residents in their homes, and to prevent the home from being foreclosed on or condemned, flipped, and the resident becoming someone in need of another organization's help. If nothing is changed in the scoring, the town is no better than a bank. If you go in with lots of assets and sources of funding, you get the money. The rich organization gets richer, and the rest are left to figure something else out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Sharon Tobias, and I live at 107 Bellamy Court. I, like Jessica, over the last couple of years, had my eyes open to the CDBG process, and when I heard this hearing list tonight, I couldn't not come and speak over some of the dilemmas of the past, some of the issues highlighted in the past, and how can we make it right moving forward. I'm going to try not to repeat some of what Jessica said, but when you look at the list of applicants for CDBG money, there's a huge disparity of resources in breadth and depth and other alternative sources between those organizations. You have an organization with $3.3 million in cash flow right now. $3.3 million. That's a lot of money. Asking for more money at the expense of other organizations. To give you some examples with the Carying Place, they could provide 3,564 days of help to families with the same amount of money that's been allocated in the past that's yet to produce any results. Dorcas, if you look at their financials, has had $1.2 million in, no, spent $1.2 million on a $1 million budget. Tammy Lynn Center, according to their annual report, $9.1 million in, $9.1 million out. And if I don't round it off, they probably, they came out $3,000 ahead. That's a huge difference to an organization who comes and asks for more money that is sitting on a $3.3 million cash flow, or $11 million in asset, or hundreds of properties in a land bank across Wake County, and asking for more money to purchase land. At what point do you want results from the money? You know, and this has been going on since 2015, and it's the fourth time money's been asked for. What I'll close with is stated in the town of Cary's application for CDBG money, and this is the quote from the town of Cary, "Projects with the greatest ability to achieve the desired outcome for the greatest number of people." And that says it all. And when you look at what these other organizations can do with the money, and the need, and what contributes to affordable housing, and what's going on out there. My personal passion is, I've been a nurse for 31 years. I understand affordable housing, but I also see the devastation in the other populations that can be helped through CDBG money, whether it's the Tammy Lynn Center and developmentally disabled adults, or it's the elderly out there that society has just become too expensive for them to live, or the disrepair, or the cascade of events that can start because of one financial insult. And so affordable housing is a component, but supporting services that stop the trigger that cascades into housing issues is really important, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak, yes, at this public hearing? If anyone else wants to speak, could you come to my right and fill out the card? Thank you.
I'm Horace Robertson. I live at 1120 Balmoral Drive, and I just want to echo some of the things that have already been said, but maybe in a different way. I'm a member of Westwood Baptist Church, and all the churches in this area are beneficiaries of what the Dorcas Ministries do, because rather than having people being in our parking lots begging for money, we can work through Dorcas Ministries and have things work for. So that money benefits all the churches in this area. Also, when I think about what we can do to rehab buildings that are in need. I live in Scottish Hills, and within three blocks of me is a house that's had a blue tarp over the entire roof for three years now. Just two blocks from that house is another place where the side of the house is down to the insulation. It's embarrassing to the people who live there who cannot afford to do more than they can, but there's not a source of funds for that, because you tend to put your money into new buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Making sure. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Do council members have any questions? All right, well, I'd like to welcome you, Ms. Mansa. Thank you very much. You did a great job at your very first presentation for town council, and I think you just started, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
So welcome. We're looking forward to seeing great things from you. All right, we're now at our first discussion item, conveyance of two fire trucks. I'll now turn it over to Fire Chief Mike Cooper for the introduction, and council may take action on this item tonight. Chief Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. The purpose of this presentation is to request your consideration of disposal of surplus fire trucks via conveyance to Guilford Technical Community College and the town of Nashville. The town of Cary, as you know, has a long history of providing support and assistance to other communities during their time of need. Like in September 2018, when a 12-person water rescue team was deployed to the Spring Lake and Dunn area, and saved numerous victims from the treacherous floodwaters of Hurricane Florence. Or the crew that drove five hours through hurricane-ravished eastern North Carolina to arrive in New Bern, and then spend the next seven days responding to emergency incidents so the New Bern community could focus on recovery from Hurricane Florence. Additionally, the town has a history of helping other communities through the sale of surplus fire trucks, helping equip other local governments, and supporting community colleges that train many of the new employees that we hire. In June 2017, the town sold a surplus fire truck to Autryville Fire Department in Sampson County, North Carolina, after a tornado struck its fire station, destroying the building and most of its fleet. The quick sale of this truck allowed that department to continue to provide emergency services to their community. Currently, the town has two fire trucks that have reached their end of useful service life, in accordance with the town's comprehensive vehicle replacement program that factors in our heavy workload that we require of our apparatus. But these surplus vehicles are a cost-effective solution to the community college training program, or a community with lower service demands. The sale of these trucks will also provide approximately $200,000 in revenue to the town. Staff recommends that council adopt the attached resolution authorizing conveyance of items of governmental property, recognize $200,000 in revenue, and appropriate $100,000 as listed in the staff report. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Cooper. Do council members have any questions?
I have a comment. I know also that when the fire chief from Atlantic Beach was tragically killed in a skiing accident, we sent a fireman down, a truck and firemen down to run, you know, take care of calls, so the community could attend the funeral, and I think it's even more than just helping these disadvantaged communities, it's just rising to help other communities. And I think it just speaks... And I think it just speaks so well, that I think we're, we're bridging that urban-rural divide with, with events like this, and I just so appreciate our department and their, what they're doing to, to help the under, under advantaged.
Thank you very much.
I think this speaks to who we are as a community. People helping people, taking care of our neighbors and those in need, and I applaud you for your efforts to, and work on this, and this is, this is good stuff, and it just makes me proud to live in the town of Cary.
Thanks, sir.
Agreed. Does that mean you're ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. Thank you, Chief Cooper.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all for being so kind to me for the first and only time I've ever done this. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good job, Lori.
Visit the town of Cary website at townofcary.org.